Good afternoon and welcome to. Good afternoon, welcome to the April 2nd, 2024 work session of the Mayor and City Council of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And before we do a budget review, I want to go back to the meeting in, which was March 19th, in reference to the tiny houses. And just to check, there was not a vote, correct? Is there a head nod for more information?
For more information or further discussion because we have a lot of questions.
You weren't here?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Are you asking if, if we're in favor of the proposal?
Well, I'm asking because Councilmember Perrini read at the meeting last week that he was withdrawing his vote for the, whatever happened at the table. And I thought that there was a discussion, a head nod to have further discussion for them to come back for more, with more information in reference to questions you guys had.
Yeah, for me, I'm a no for the proposal. I had like 10 or 12 questions associated with the proposal if it goes forward.
And that was just a head nod to say, to come back with more information with further discussion?
For me, I also asked about getting staff's opinion on the list of requirements or responsibilities. That was my, that was my understanding to come back to the table.
Okay, so Councilmember Perrini, you withdraw and was it just for the support of the more conversation?
Well, I thought it was pretty clear in what I was saying, but.
Well, I'm asking him to say it again.
Okay, I am opposed to moving forward.
So.
So you're split.
So you're opposed to moving forward, no more discussion?
I mean, I was not, I was not at the, the only information I have is what I have in front of me in a video.
Okay.
So I am not in favor of moving forward with the proposal.
Okay. And you guys, are you okay with staff coming back and talking more or no?
I was a yes for that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor for more information, but.
Kristen, the same, is it more information or I know you were a no for the proposal, I just need, I wanna.
Yeah, I'm opposed to the proposal. If it's going to move forward, what I presented was 10 or 12 questions that I had associated with the proposal as presented, such as management, location, activity, you know. I mean, there's a whole host of questions. And I don't think that those questions, at least that I had, I felt were germane specifically to that specific proposal. In other words, the questions that I had associated with who's gonna manage it, you know, who's gonna run it, who's gonna decide who gets in. All of that stuff's still going to be relevant, whether you decide, whether this body or some body decides that it's going to be this idea or some other version to address this item. If it's going to be the funding proposed or some other funding to address the item, those questions are still going to be there. But as it applies to this specific proposal, I was opposed to that. I'm still gonna have those questions. So they still gotta come back anyway.
Okay, okay.
And I did say that with the, the request to use the opioid restitution funding, I said restitution money, I said I was a yes for that while we were discussing. But if we were to come back to the table, what does that actually look like? We didn't get those answers.
And that, that whole use of the opioid restitution money is still an interpret, is still an interpretation and somewhat disagreement between lawyer people. So.
Right.
I don't, I don't think, certainly if the opioid restitution money can't be used, that puts a serious crimp in being able to do anything. Because you're gonna have to have, you're gonna have to find funding somewhere. And I think what, what they presented the other day was conceptual. It was just wanting to go try to find out more information to help address Councilman Alashire's questions. And several other questions I think that exist, including how's, how's it gonna get paid for? And we can either do that or we don't have to, you know what I mean?
So what would you guys?
Yes, for further discussion for me.
So I just wanna be clear for the, the public. Because there's a mix-up, it seems, there seems to be a mix-up, there seems to be. I, I would appreciate it if, if any of us show up in a room and you don't have, especially council, and you don't have someone else with you that you're, you're saying just for yourself and not the elected body, right? Like because there's this, the elected body does not want, and that's not the case, the elected body has to be three people to not want or to want.
And again, this wasn't asking, this wasn't asking you all to say, yes, we're gonna do this, we're gonna put it in the old known, we're gonna fund it with it. That was not what this was about. This was a concept of which the initial ideas were this, 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 and this. They just wanted the ability to go forward and try to ferret out, make clear those issues. And hear your questions like Councilman Alashire's, so that they can address those if and when, if or when, they would come back to the body. That's all that was about.
That's what I understood for me personally, what you just said.
And that's still a yes for me, I'd be interested to hear more.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't, the confusion, I just, it makes it very difficult to be the spokesperson on behalf of the city, so I just wanna be clear, so that I have the proper.
I think the simplest I can say for me is I believe it's appropriate to have the conversation of the attributes associated with the idea. I don't believe, at least for me, since I'm opposed to that specific idea at that specific location, that that part of the conversation, at least for me, is as relevant at this point.
Right.
In other words, if we want to address the idea or the issue, then we, we should do that. But there are a host of options, at least in my mind, that could accomplish that. And that specific option that was provided was not the option that I support. But regardless of that, if we're going to address the issue, those number of questions are all gonna have to be addressed regardless. Funding's gonna have to be addressed, who manages it is gonna have to be addressed, who's eligible is gonna have to be addressed. All of that stuff is still applicable if there is consensus among the body to pursue the idea. That's right.
Yeah, I feel the same way, I wanna make sure that I'm understanding what you just said. I am not in favor of the idea. We do have a homeless issue and the, and the discussion needs to continue regularly in order for us to help to solve where we're going. And the questions and the answers need to come back to us, whether it's an idea that three people support. Me personally, I just don't support this, this concept. Does that help?
That does, because that makes, that kinda makes sense to me, staff had to come back with alternatives, which I feel like.
Right, right.
Councilmember Arshet.
And that was my point last Tuesday. So this presentation, two weeks ago, which is literally called Tiny Village, included photographs of actual types of facilities, little sheds. It had a property identified with a site map and a photograph, an aerial photograph. It, this was a very specific project. And that's what I'm saying, I do not concur with this project. I would love to have a larger, broader conversation amongst this mayor and council. And I think there, there's a Washington County Homeless Coalition with like 16 board members who are supposedly the experts in this issue. And I think there's a, there's an opportunity to tap into that knowledge as well. So there's, there's a lot of other discussion, this particular project, that as it was presented, I'm, I'm a no.
Well, that was the, that was what happened at the meeting, was there was a no for this specific proposed project, but there was a yes or a head nods that staff to come back with further discussion and not necessarily just around that location, so we're good then.
Yep.
That makes sense, because your face is still looking at me like.
Just as long as it's, because I, there's three of us that are not in, that are, don't want to talk about.
Well, I feel like everyone kind of made that clear, like the, just to keep talking and not.
Just talking.
Yes, about other options, not the tiny village. Okay.
Is that helpful?
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, yes. All right, we're good?
That's good.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so fiscal year 2025 budget review. Scott Nicewoner and Michelle Heffron, Chief Financial Officer.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. As, as Michelle makes her way up to the front, I'll go ahead and start. First, I want to thank the staff in Accounting and Finance for all their work. Basically, seven days a week through January, from January through March, in getting this budget together. I also want to thank all the staff throughout all the departments who worked on their individual budgets, sat through countless meetings for both CIP and operational budget discussions, and again, provided the council with a quality progressive proposed budget. Before getting into a couple of the key focal points with the budget, I'd like to present some bullet points in general. First, the budget is presented to you as balanced with about a $5,000 and change surplus. The tax rate is maintained at FY '24 rates, which is $1 and two, what is that, thousandths of a cent?
1.002, that's.
Per $100 of assessed value. There is no change in the corporate personal property tax rate of $2.50 per.
Fifty and a half.
Fifty and a half cents per $100 of assessed value, which is basically two and a half times the, the real property rate. Highway user revenues provided by the state of Maryland of $125,000 will cover a portion of eligible annual debt requirement and 1.6 million for capital projects. However, the spending of HUR highway user revenue was kept lower than FY '24 estimates due to the flux of which this revenue stream exists within the General Assembly. Revenues were to increase each year through FY '28, but appear now to be held static to FY '24 and perhaps lowered over the next three years due to forecasted budget deficits over the next three years at state level. And reduction in HUR results in the inability to fund projects related to road and accessory quality improvements. There are no transfers from the Health Insurance Fund for FY '25. Utilization of general fund balance reserves of 2.2 million from a combination of previously approved projects not yet completed, reallocation to new capital projects and adding reserves to maintain the policy guideline of 17% of general operating budget and two months of operating expenditures.
And if I could, on that point, again, just reiterate, the 2.2 million in general fund balance reserves being utilized in the proposed budget has already previously been approved at this, at this level. Plus, it included the 600,000 that we talked about in December from prior year's surplus. So when all of that is considered, we are within the guidelines at fiscal year '25 proposed budget, general fund would be at 33.6% in four months in comparison to the policy guideline. So still maintaining substantially above that.
Right. 1.3 million in transfers to the Economic Redevelopment Fund for various incentives and costs, including the $975,000 for the Invest Hagerstown program. Salary and benefit costs of 38.6 million or 61.2% of the general fund. These include the addition of two FTE for the Police Watch Center, Deputy Fire Chief, and four part-time sworn officer positions that have already been in front of you. The budget also contains a half-year funding allocation for one FTE and HPD in alternate response. And what's the same for the grant administrator position in Accounting and Finance. These will also be the allocation, there will also be the allocation of two part-time sworn positions in HPD and one FTE to bring alternate response to two staff people.
So basically, the, the currently approved full-time staffing isn't changing versus what has already come before this panel. The only thing differently in this budget that has not yet been here is that, one, we talked about the grant coordinator position, it was ARPA-funded. We also have a community outreach liaison position that is ARPA-funded. Both of those were set to expire December 31 of 2024. This just assumes that they're gonna continue to be there.
Right.
Right? Then the only change was, it was approved for four part-time sworn officers. In this budget, we've converted and eliminated, I don't wanna say eliminate, but we converted two of those part-time sworn positions to one new full-time position that would be for an alternate response program. If this group would decide later, once they hear about the alternative response program, that that's not the way we're going, it really, all that it does, it doesn't impact the dollars, it just means I will have one less full-time and two more part-time. Okay?
Okay. Police and fire pension contributions increased from 14.3% to 16% of base salaries in FY '25. Health insurance premiums also are seeing a large increase. The city has covered that increase for employees for many years, but the ability to continue this will be severely tested in the coming years. The city will also have a significant bond issue this coming fiscal year of 15.9 million related to the Hagerstown Fieldhouse. We've been fortunate to be able to utilize American Rescue Plan funding of $20.4 million to address several projects related to the health of the community and priority infrastructure needs of the city. That funding must be 100% obligated by December 31st, 2024. Michelle Heffron and Brooke Garver have kept the council updated on a quarterly basis on the status of ARPA obligations, and we fully expect to have all 20.4 obligated by the federal deadline. The city has not been immune to the increasing cost of materials and services that all private and public entities have experienced over the post-COVID period. Though that trend has seemed to have slowed or plateaued in the last few months, we're still finding costs higher than forecasted for materials and services critical to city operations. Staff have been diligent in ensuring the taxpayer dollars are being used in the most cost-effective and efficient way possible through competitive bidding and the application of writing other entity contracts to get the best price possible. Regarding utilities, a revised water wastewater rate study has been communicated to the council and will be finalized in the coming weeks. There will also be a study for electric rates provided to the council pending Public Service Commission approval. That will be the first rate increase discussion in just shy of 20 years. We do not take these rate adjustments lightly, but they are necessary to be able to afford the increase in labor and material costs of running utility. Our rates will remain among the lowest in the five-state area for all utilities even after these adjustments are made. And more information will be provided to the council on the specifics of these funds during the April and May work sessions. The city will also be challenged in the coming years to manage the increasing cost of healthcare and pension liabilities. Staff have already begun evaluating our health costs at a rising level that's not seen in decades. It is imperative that we have an environment of cooperation and understanding when the employee groups are this challenge and work towards a benefits plan that is beneficial not only, not only to our employees, retirees, retirees and their families, but also to the ability of the city to afford it. The city maintains a plan that is one of, if not the best, in municipal government, as well as many private companies, but near that. And our ability to afford that is being tested, to afford that is being tested. At the same time, and perhaps a catch-22 to the previous comment, we must be able to produce an environment for individuals to consider municipal government as a career opportunity while also ensuring that we're able to retain staff for extended periods of time. We've taken steps in FY '24 to do that, especially, especially as it relates to law enforcement and our more technical positions. Again, this is an environment that is common to most municipalities throughout, throughout the country and offers up a competitive environment with higher paying, higher flex private companies. We will continue to work on this throughout FY '25, especially as we enter into union contract negotiations in April of '25. As I stated in my first budget message, just a few months before the COVID pandemic began, I feel it is necessary that we look at the current structure of government and determine if we are meeting the requirements and demands of our times. I could argue that our city government is structured similarly, similarly to that of the 1980s when technology and the speed of information was either new or nonexistent. We must look at whether the way we do business now is the way we need to do business in the future. This goes to the services we offer, the way we perform them, and how we pay for them. It is imperative that in FY '25, we develop ideas to bring forth to the elected body for your consideration on these concerns and look to ensure that we are using the taxpayers' money in the absolute best way possible. The challenges that exist, however, are equally balanced with the exciting times which we are seeing in 2024 and beyond. Increased economic development and the opening of our Hagerstown Fieldhouse to serve thousands of adults and youth throughout our community and beyond. The opening of Mary's Park for not only professional baseball, but a wide range of other events that will bring many downtown for the first time. The completion of several capital projects, including the Antietam Street parking deck, new water and wastewater pumping stations to increase the quality of services in our outer zones, our progressive and innovative public safety staff, and the increase of business placement and expansion, not only in the inner core, but throughout our city, is what has, and what has become a focal point of business development in the four-state area. Thanks to the foresight and planning of this administration, including the work of former Mayor Emily Keller and Councilmember Bob Bruci, Hagerstown is poised to experience a growth not seen in decades. We're excited to be part of this moment in history for Hagerstown, as well as work to prepare for the continued revitalization and expansion in the future. We welcome your suggestions, comments on the proposed budget. We're operating out of the gate with a proposed budget, so any adjustments that would require, that would require compensation, adjustments are either gonna be made through cuts or they're gonna be made through increasing revenues in some form. And turn it over to Michelle for her review of the schedule for discussions and the actions that you'll need to take to get us for the charter to an approved budget.
Thank you.
Nice, good job.
That was. So this evening, being typically what happens is the budget book gets delivered on March 31st and either like the first, second, or third, we have our very first meeting. So it really doesn't permit enough time for everybody to fully digest the 400-plus page document. So again, what we decided to do for this first meeting, even though these actually came last Thursday due to the extended Easter holiday, is go ahead and still take the opportunity to do a higher level, start the conversation again, walking through the entire city, city, all across, high level, across all funds. What was included in the packet and copied with a memo, and also we have extra copies here for anybody that comes and joins our meetings that does not have, is 50 pages out of our section one, our overview section. Those 50 pages are a very nice, high-level summary. If you get through this full 50 pages, you pretty much have a good idea of everything that's happening in our budget. You're not gonna know how many nuts and bolts somebody is purchasing, but you're going to know what's happening and, and what funds and what transactions are happening. The budget book itself, before I go to the memo, just because instead of doing this next week, I just hit it, high level tonight. It's in the same layout as it has been. You will have preliminary demographics in the very first, then you'll have section one, which again is a nice overview. It's the 50 pages that are previously mentioned, plus lots of other good information, including our strategic plan, department goals, organizational narrative. The very next section we do is the general fund section. It is a very good breakdown, and it is not in the thousands, but to the dollar. The general fund section starts with a nice overview of everything in there, then it hits revenue, and then it hits departments. So if there is a place where you're wanting to see more information at a more minute level, and it's the department within the general fund, section two is where you wanna go. Section three is exactly like section two, only it is where our enterprise funds. Our enterprise funds consist of electric, water, wastewater, golf, stormwater, and parking. Again, very similar in layout, right, and information you'll see. Revenue, expenses, and again, it's to the dollar. Section four, again, these first several sections are all the same, right? But it's the special revenue funds, and what's a special revenue fund? Where our community block development, community development block program, or CDBG fund, is a special revenue. Our Economic Redevelopment Fund, which is where all of our incentives, right? That's a special revenue fund, so is Grant and a few others. So again, section four. When you get to section five, same as the first several, it's our service and trust funds. It contains workers' comp, health fund, dental fund, and also Bloom Carlisle. I will say that this is probably a section of the book that for many, many years that I have been here, we haven't mentioned at all. I will say, as Scott, thank you very much, our city administrator, mentioned in opening comments, we do need to have conversations around our health insurance. Then section six, so financial projection section, section six. This document has an extra year of history the other sections do not include, so two years of audit details. Here, things will be rounded off to the thousandths, and it will include projections for not only fiscal year '25, but four years beyond that. Section seven, our largest in volume, is our capital improvement program. It is every capital project, whether it's a general fund or a utility fund, and there is a lot of good information. The beginning of it, again, is very summarized, has reports, and then the majority and the bulk is detailed sheets and pictures of the funds with a description, project funding sources, and the overall expenses. The last two sections, schedule, section eight is our user fee or our rate section. And the final one is just fiscal policies and a glossary. So again, just trying to take a minute to walk people through the budget book, because it has been available, it is online. We know it is extremely slow right now, and we are working on that. But city administrator did a good job, I'm gonna bring us back to the memo, we're gonna hit some highlights, right? I think he hit almost all of them in the general fund, but just, we will be meeting from now until the end of May. We are hopeful that May 21st, we will be having our final budget review and is a right, in our work session, and also be adopting the ordinance for both our tax rate and for the budget. We are short a meeting because the second week in May is primary elections. So there is a possibility, I've requested, to look at adding during the April 23rd regular session, a work session possibly before then, just so that we still have that extra week built in so that we have time to cover questions and make sure we're hitting all the funds. So overall, ARPA funding, we have several, we have a lot of information here. We've covered information on ARPA again quarterly, we will be coming back again soon. We'll hit it a little bit more detailed next week, but as of June 2023, we had utilized a total of six point, we had spent, we had expended 6.2 million in our fiscal year '24 projected expenditures, we've got another 9.3 million. And the fiscal year '25 proposed budget, we have 4.3. And if anybody's doing the math, they're gonna say, Michelle, that doesn't quite come to 20.4, it's shy, just about 600,000. That 600,000 is still in items that we have allocated, right, and is still in all of our ARPA charts. It's just that it didn't, might not be finalized on exactly in what way it's going to be spent, like some of the, the blight money. So we have to be able to focus, and it isn't, it isn't critical that it's missing here, because we would add the funding and we'd add the expense, it's gonna be net neutral. But as long as we keep it on our radar and our ARPA items, we still committed to December 31, 2024, to have everything obligated. And then those things that are obligated have to be spent by December 31, 2026. Then under the general fund, again, our city administrator pretty much hit all the highlights. Just wanna reemphasize, we have not, we are not proposing any changes to the tax rate. So the real estate tax rate was 1.002. And the state of Maryland, we have the ability to set a unique and separate corporate personal property tax rate, but if you do not set a flat dollar amount, then it is two and a half times the amount of your real estate. We typically just leave it as it is, so it's 2.505. And again, those are per $100 of assessed value. We've got, for the first time in many years, this is our second year in our training and assessment, and we're looking at like a 6.5% growth from ESTAT. We're anticipating a little bit more. We're hopeful that the reductions in the appeals aren't as high as what they're saying. So that 6.9% equates to about an additional. So that 6.9% equates to about an additional 2.6 million overall. Now that's in real estate and corporate personal property. Highway user, again, is going to be one of those things that we continue to keep a watchful eye on and be concerned. In the past, in fiscal year nine and fiscal year 10, when it was totally removed and it went from 1.9 million down to 40,000 after the budget was already adopted, it was, it was very significant, because the majority of the money at that time at the city was within the general fund, and now the highway user, I don't want to say it's not significant, because if Jim Bender's sitting back here, he's going to. But we utilize it for the majority, all within the CIP side. So if we had to delay or defer or find other funding sources, it's easier there than trying to remove 1.9 million or 1.6 million in revenue dollars out of the general fund. Health insurance fund, yes. Scott mentioned there was no transfers of the health insurance fund, and we'll get into that a little bit more. We mentioned staffing, and the only changes that are in the budget that are different from what's already been discussed is converting of two sworn part-time positions for police to one new full-time civilian police. Salary benefit costs, again, 38.6 million of the total, 63 million in our expenses. Police and fire contributions increased to 16% of base salaries. There is also an increase in the State of Maryland Pension Plan, and that is mandated and given to us on an annual basis by the State of Maryland. We have no control over it. In the general fund, if, if nothing else changes, if nothing else changes. Right now, there's an estimated deficit in fiscal year '26, and you will see that in Section Six in the financial projection sections of not, of 6.9 million dollars. And that just means between now and then, if nothing else changes, and everybody comes back with all the same things that they requested, and everything that's needed is a capital project, I'll have to find a way to balance that 6.9 in either deferring of projects, reducing of other expenditures, or finding new revenue streams, which are extremely difficult to do. Actually, one of the things I did not put in your memo, but we will certainly talk about next week, one of the new revenue streams in the general fund was in fiscal year '24, but it's only amounting, it's cannabis revenues, cannabis sales tax revenue, but it's probably on an annual basis only going to be 64,000. But again, new revenue stream that we weren't expecting before. Economic Redevelopment Fund, so 975,000 in funding from the general fund to the Economic Redevelopment Fund for the Invest Hagerstown Program for fiscal year '25. That's about an additional $47,000 more than their current year budget. Also includes another 35,000 for individual custom, or customized incentives, and typically there's a program called Spring Sprouts, or there's other smaller incentive grants. And then last, there's 131,500 for the PEP incentive program. And the electric fund, the wholesale power contract is currently in place and effective through December 31, 2026 at a rate of 50, 55, $54.05 per, yeah, 54.05. And so when, I do want to mention, because Scott did in his overall presentation, the wholesale power contract, you know, somebody's going to say, oh, City Administrator said nobody's talked about electric rates or done anything with electric rates in a very long time. Actually, it's true. The wholesale power contract, what happens is, is, is it's a pass-through. So the wholesale power contract goes into place, the rates since I have been here have gone up. There's been years they've gone down. That price for the wholesale power that is passed to the customers go up and down direct, is a direct impact of that. What has not changed is the cost of service or the retail, overall retail rate design, and that was last done, according to our records, in 2005. Under the electric fund, there's been no change in any of the full-time staffing. There's a slight change in the overall because of an allocation switch from electric to water. Total capital projects included in fiscal year '25 are at 4.2 million for the electric fund. And the fiscal year '25 budget for the electric fund includes a deficit of $86,000. A theme as you look through my next several bullets. Ending cash balance projection is set to decrease for the electric fund from 2.6 million in fiscal year '24 to eventually 14.3 million deficit in fiscal year '29. And that is if we move forward with continuing to do infrastructure projects and other items that are not offset by the wholesale power, right, expense. And we don't increase our revenue, we're going to be, we're going to, we're going to be, Nathan's going to be looking for other benefits for revenue streams. Water fund, the cost rate model is, as Scott mentioned, is in process. The budget book itself included a half a percent rate increase for fiscal year '25, but 14% for three years after that in the financial projection section. And that's based on the current estimates of 14% annually being necessary for a three-year period to cover the infrastructure costs that are in there. There's no change in staffing for water. Total capital projects included in fiscal year '25 is 8 million. And with the inclusion of that, fiscal year '25 proposed budget is at a deficit of 2.4. Ending cash balance projections set, anticipated to decrease from 13.4 million in fiscal year '25 to negative balance in fiscal year '29. Wastewater fund, again, same cost rate model. 3% rate increase was utilized in the budget numbers that are reflected for fiscal year '25, and then 13% for three years after that in the financial projection section. And that's again, because the 13% is what's being currently proposed in that cost rate study. No changes again in staffing for wastewater fund. Total, total capital projects here, 16.2 million. So for fiscal year '25, wastewater is at a surplus of 4.7. Cash balance is anticipated to decrease from 2.9 million in fiscal year '25 to negative balance in fiscal year '29. And again, as we work our way through the financial projection sections and you see the large amount being invested in infrastructure, you're going to see why those numbers come into play. The parking fund, rates are currently being reviewed at a staff level, and potential changes or discussions will come back to council, I think, in two weeks. Hub parking garage is anticipated to open July 1st, and so fiscal year '25 reflects a full year for both associated revenues and operating expenses in the budget. No change in full-time staffing levels, full-time staffing levels, but there has been an addition of a part-time position added from hub parking. Total capital projects included for fiscal year '25 is just 35,000, and you might say, Michelle, but that's because everything, just in everything being completed for the hub city parking garage by June 30. We assume that a bond refunding will happen, so when you look at the information, don't be surprised. You're going to see a large amount for a principal repayment, because in July, so actually in a couple of weeks, I coming, Brooke and myself are coming back to discuss that. We did a ban, a short-term bond anticipation note last June, and it was for 10.6. So when we do the bond issue for the new Hagerstown Fieldhouse, we also said we planned and we already approved that we would do a refunding of the 10.6 million short-term ban for the parking, for the hub parking garage into a long-term GO bond issue. So you'll see, you'll see it come out as a principal payment and come back in as new funding source. Overall, fiscal year '25 proposed budget for parking does include a deficit of 492,000 and anticipated in the out years and the projections that cash will decrease from 805,000 in fiscal year '25 to negative balance in fiscal year '29. We have been showing that, that for parking is not new and has not changed. That has actually been in our projections for a while, as we anticipated and looked at timing of when we built the new parking deck and how long it's going to take us to restore to a positive cash flow after that. Stormwater fund, rate water is approved through June, and the current rate is $36 per 1,000 square foot of incurvious surface. Staff has been working with a consultant to look at those rates and probably be coming back in the near future to have a conversation again on those. No change in full-time staffing for stormwater fund. Total capital project cost, 4.2 million dollars. And overall fiscal year '25 proposed budget has a surplus of just 2.8. So basically, we'd like to come back next week, go ahead and start in the general fund, because I feel like that's typically where the most questions are. Spend a couple of weeks there and then move to the other funds. We probably will, since there's going to be some rate discussions for both the parking fund and return for rate discussions for water and wastewater in two weeks. It may make sense to look at their financial projections as those conversations are occurring, because I think, I think a lot of questions at the end of the rate conversation when Newgen and Mike were here, you know, you're, you're hearing and you're seeing abbreviated numbers and a percentage increase, but what to drive in that? Where are our costs, and did we have everything included? And I think that's budget and the financial projections will help make that maybe a little bit more clear. Again, May 7th would be the public hearing for the budget and the property tax rate, as well as introduction of the ordinance for the budget and the property tax rate. And then May 21st, since we're off the second week of May, for the adoption of the ordinance. Just as a general reminder, the budget must be approved and adopted, and the tax rate approved and adopted by the end of May every year. The tax rates, if we don't do that, they don't continue at the current rate, we just don't get a tax rate. They, they have to be reset on an annual basis. Okay. I know that was really high level, and we tried to cram a lot in, but we'll be back starting next week. Feel free to email me.
And I would ask, as you go through, if you have, if you have questions for staff related to particular funding or what, if you would funnel those through me to make sure that they get, because these guys are all over the place throughout the day doing their day job, I want to make sure that we can coordinate a response to everyone so that all the mayor and council will get the information, the answers to the questions. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Human trafficking awareness training, Paul Falk, Neighborhood Services Manager, and Emily McFarland, Neighborhood Services Coordinator. Emily, I think you like us.
I know. Good afternoon. I would like to introduce two presenters this evening for human trafficking awareness. We have Lindsay Reed here and Special Agent Chris Reed, Lindsay Carpenter, I should say, and Chris Reed. They'll come up to be presenting. Steph from the Code Office went to Frederick back in January, and we attended their training. We found it to be very helpful and informative, and we hope that you do too.
Thank you. They're welcome.
Thanks for having us.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. My name's Lindsay Carpenter. I'm Chief of the Special Victims Unit at the Frederick County State's Attorney's Office.
My name is Christopher Reed. I work for Homeland Security Investigations out of Frederick.
So we had presented to the Hagerstown Planning and Code. We've been working very closely in Frederick County in terms of working on a collaboration to address human trafficking. This all started back in 2016. Our county council in Frederick County established the Frederick County Human Trafficking Task Force. It was a one-year legislative task force that met monthly from January of 2017 through January of 2018. You can see on the screen there, there were designees from several different agencies. We had our Human Relations Division, the State's Attorney's Office, our City Police Department, Commission for Women, Child Advocacy Center, United Way, our Health Department, our county school system, Hartley House, which is our rape crisis center, our hospital, our county council, our state delegation, Maryland Municipal League, Human Relations Commission, DSS, and then our sheriff's office. Each of those agencies had a designee. I was actually the designee for the State's Attorney's Office. And so what we did is we broke it up into four different subcommittees. Data collection and scope of the problem to kind of see what was happening in Frederick County, community response and protocol, which was the subcommittee that I was on, training and education, and then legislative considerations. And at the end of that one-year fact-finding task force, we created a final report with recommendations to the county council in January of 2018. And that full report is available online. And so one of those recommendations was that the county council introduced specific legislation. They did introduce and pass all three of these legislative initiatives. The first one was to establish mandatory human trafficking identification training program for lodging establishment employees. The second one was to establish a county bodyworks license for establishments employing providers who are not licensed through the state. And then the third was one to establish penalties for landlords or tenants who knowingly would allow trafficking to occur at their properties. So as I indicated, all of those actually passed in October of 2018, and they all became effective in December of 2018. And one of the recommendations was to continue our work as a multidisciplinary response team. So we found that by bringing everyone to the table, creating those collaborative relationships, we were much better able to address this problem. And so we continued that collaboration through the Frederick County Human Trafficking Response Team. That was actually created in February of 2018, so immediately after we submitted that final report, the State's Attorney's Office is the lead agency. Hartley House, which is our rape crisis center, is the co-chair, and we broke it into three subcommittees, steering, protocols, and community outreach. The mission is to provide a victim-centered collaborative response to human trafficking in Frederick County to assist in the identification of victims, prosecution of cases, and availability and use of comprehensive services for victims. And so the steering committee, the idea behind that was we wanted to make sure that the heads of the two subcommittees were ensuring that we're continuing to move forward, continuing to make progress. The protocol subcommittee, our purpose was to establish, and we have established, a countywide protocol to address human trafficking in Frederick County. And so what we did is we broke it up into two different categories, adult victims and juvenile victims, and then depending on how the victim is identified, whether it's through law enforcement, the hospital, CPS, how, or DJS, how that victim is identified, then what our response will be. And so we did establish a countywide protocol. We also have implemented a MOU so that we could have case discussion and collaboration between agencies. And we also established a victim services fund. If we were to have cases in which we needed funding that was not allowed per current parameters. We also have the Community Outreach Subcommittee. That Subcommittee has gone out and trained numerous organizations on how to identify and respond to suspected human trafficking. We've worked with hotels, we've worked with tattoo artists, we've worked with service providers, substance abuse counselors, to try to get with those providers so that they can identify and know what to do if they suspect trafficking. So as part of this, in October of last year, we created INTERCEPT. It is an inter-agency child exploitation and persons trafficking task force. We actually partnered with Operation Lightshine. What we found was that our human trafficking response team and our cybercrimes task force, a lot of our cases were overlap, overlapping. And so we decided that we were going to work together with our partners, and we co-located and opened INTERCEPT in October of 2023.
Sure. So the INTERCEPT task force is in Frederick, Maryland, is composed of quite a few different agencies. You have the Frederick County Sheriff's Office, Maryland State Police, Frederick Police, Department of Homeland Security, FBI, the US Secret Service. And so us all sitting under one roof, it allows us to better communicate, attack one problem with many different levels and resources, and ultimately come to a faster conclusion to the case. So I am a part of this task force, but I actually cover Carroll County to Garrett County, Maryland, and I often find myself in Hagerstown.
So at INTERCEPT, we do investigations, provide victim services, we do trainings. We actually partnered with our code enforcement and planning and zoning and permitting as well. We provided training to your code enforcement and planning and zoning. We go out and do community awareness events. We are actually out in our schools, providing training to students at schools for human trafficking awareness. As well as online exploitation awareness. We do prevention and education as well as advocacy.
Sure, so there's a few different types of human trafficking. The one that we primarily see in this area is sex trafficking. Under sex trafficking, you know, there's illicit massage parlors, brothels. Many strip clubs are all for services or encourage girls outside of work to participate in trafficking. Escort services, pornography, generally that's child pornography. And hotels, homes, streets are common areas where human trafficking will occur.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said, in this area, do you mean the area that you cover, or are you talking about Washington County in general?
So both. My office is in Frederick, but I'm kind of the designee for Hagerstown.
You mentioned this, so you're.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, I'm giving you.
This area.
If you'd like for me to focus more on Hagerstown, I'm happy to do it.
I mean, I just want to make sure that I understand.
Okay, sure, yep. So I'll slow down a little bit, because this is pretty important stuff.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem. I have a lot of caffeine in me, so. So there's illicit massage parlors. You've probably seen these before, not even recognized them. They're massage parlors that generally don't have licenses, none of the masseuses have licenses. Oftentimes, they are President of the United States illegally, however you want to phrase that. And sometimes they are tricked into entering the US under false pretenses. For instance, yes, you may enter the US to, I'm just giving examples here. To work on nails or to be a laborer. And once they arrive here, their passports rip from them. And they're said, you can stay here and pay off the debt that you owe us by working at this illicit massage parlor. Brothels kind of go hand in hand with that. Brothels are generally run out of a house. I've never encountered a brothel in Hagerstown since I've been here, but I can tell you that they probably pop up, they probably exist. Strip clubs and bars. You know, Hagerstown did have a strip club for a while, I'm not aware of anything there. Escort services, so this is a big one for Fred, for Western Maryland for the most part. There's several publicly available escort websites where anybody can get on and search for available escorts in the area. Now, one of the issues with that is Hagerstown is a giant shipping port, or we all know this, I seventy, I eighty-one. Lots of trucking, lots of hotels. Somewhat of a transient town, a lot of people stop here, stay here a night. And with that comes, you know, obviously, human trafficking. So a lot of times the escorts are kind of driven around the US and they stop in major arteries of the country, like Hagerstown. And that's generally when I encounter them. Child pornography, child pornography is everywhere, that's nothing unique to Hagerstown, but we do a lot of that out here. Hotels, homes, and streets. I can tell you firsthand, can't go into the names of the hotels, because I don't want to defame anybody. But Hagerstown does have several hotels. Where this is more common than not. And I don't want to say that the owners of the hotels are aware of it or not, I don't know. But then that brings us to labor trafficking. Obviously, we're all kind of familiar with that. People come into the United States. They're undercompensated or not provided good working conditions. Or a lot of times they'll pay money to the cartel to get them here. And then once they're here, the terms of the deal are changed and then they end up, you know, working a job for very, very low wages.
Yeah, and I apologize for going fast. Typically, we do an hour-long presentation, but I want to be very respectful of your time, so.
Good.
I'm trying to go through quickly, but also hit the highlights. So I will say, typically, I do have, we have a heat map through Polaris. Which shows in red where the hotspots are in the United States. Through the northeastern, there is along the coast, a hotspot. And typically, what I say, I'm most familiar with Frederick County because that's what I work out of. But because of where we are located on the interstates, which would be true for Hagerstown. What we see typically is transants, so they are coming from DC or another large city. And they're traveling through Frederick, through Hagerstown to get to Philly or New York City. And so they're stopping here for a portion of time and then making their way up. I will also say that we have had trafficking cases in Frederick County where the victims are from Hagerstown. So there is definitely a direct connection between Hagerstown, Washington County, and Frederick County. Labor trafficking, we have seen recently an increase in reported juvenile labor trafficking. I'm not sure in terms of Washington County. But what we have seen regarding that is who, children who are being placed after being stopped at the border. Are then more susceptible to being labor trafficked. So we have had an increase in those cases in Frederick County. So this is the statute under the Criminal Code, it's a lot of words. The main part of the statute is prostitution, which would be a commercial sex act. And so a person cannot take or cause someone to be taken for the purpose of prostitution. Place them for the purpose of prostitution. Persuade or encourage someone to be taken for prostitution. Receive consideration to place someone for prostitution. Engage in a continuing course of conduct that would make them believe that they're subject to harm if they don't engage in sexually explicit conduct. Or destroy, conceal, or remove, confiscate any type of identification document. Whether that be a passport, whether that be a government identification, or immigration document.
How this is relevant to the city of Hagerstown. I grew up in this area, so I'm somewhat familiar with the area. This applies mostly to a lot of the women that you see walking around downtown Hagerstown, specifically in this area. They may have somebody that is providing them narcotics in exchange for working in the sex, in the sex trade. And, you know, we've encountered that a few times here. And that's just directly linking it to Hagerstown like you asked for, that would be this.
So if someone violates that statute, it is a ten-year misdemeanor and this is statewide law. So this would apply to Hagerstown, this is the Criminal Code for Maryland. If, however, the victim is a minor, so if the victim is under the age of eighteen. Regardless of whether or not the trafficker knew the victim was under eighteen, it is a twenty-five-year maximum penalty felony. So the trafficker does not have to know that they were sixteen, seventeen, fifteen. If the victim is under the age of eighteen, it's automatically a felony. Or if the trafficker uses force, fraud, or coercion, and the victim is an adult, then it would be a felony as well. Our labor trafficking statute actually was just codified in two thousand and nineteen. Prior to two thousand and nineteen, the state of Maryland did not have a labor trafficking statute. So under the labor trafficking statute, it is a felony. A person may not take, place, harbor, persuade, or induce another by force, fraud, or coercion to provide services or labor. So force, fraud, or coercion can look like this. So force would be what you typically think about the physical force, the rape, the physical assault. Fraud is what we most typically see. So it's that promise of a better life, promise of love, promise of taking care of you. That's what we typically see, is that's the way the trafficker recruits and keeps a hold of their victim is promising. You know, we're going to go on fancy vacations, we're going to be millionaires, I'm going to, you know, pay for you to get your hair or your nails done. You know, we're going to have this great lavish lifestyle, but I need you to do this for me. And we really see that it's very tragic and sad. These victims really are manipulated and fall into this. They truly believe that this person is taking care of them. And then we also have coercion that threatened abuse of the legal process in terms of threats that they're going to report them to immigration. They're going to be deported, your family back home in your home country is going to be killed if you don't comply. That's what we see in terms of coercion. So this is what we see in terms of recruitment. So I always, when I give my presentations, I talk about Maslow's hierarchy of need. And so what these traffickers do is they really truly are master manipulators. So they identify the vulnerability that that victim has and they latch onto that vulnerability. So whether that's a child who has run away from home and is seeking shelter or food or clothing. Whether it's someone who maybe has grown up in a broken home and needs love and affection. Someone who wants, you know, that nice purse, those new nails. Whatever type of vulnerability that individual has, whether it be a child or an adult. Whether they have a substance abuse addiction and they're looking for that next fix and the trafficker uses that as a method of control. Whatever vulnerability the trafficker can use to manipulate and use that individual to exploit them. So I just put this slide up here because in two thousand and twenty, when COVID hit. Most of our kids, most of our socialization went online, right? And so we saw that online recruitment, recruitment in two thousand and twenty went up twenty-two percent. And if you dive down deeper into that recruitment through Facebook, went up a hundred and twenty-five percent. And recruitment through Instagram went up ninety-five percent. So these traffickers are smart, right? They go where the kids go and they follow what everyone else is doing. Recruitment from foster homes went down seventy percent and schools and strip clubs went down as well. So the top three types of identified labor trafficking in Maryland was domestic work, agricultural, and animal husbandry. And then traveling sales crews. We actually did have a trafficking case in Frederick County where the victim was recruited by someone who was engaged in traveling sales. Labor trafficking recruitment tactics were job offer advertisement, false promises, and then smuggling related. And then the forms of force, fraud, and coercion for labor trafficking. And this is from two thousand and nineteen, where withholding their payer earnings, excessive working hours, or threat to report to immigration. And so then if you compare that to two thousand and twenty, the top five risk factors in two thousand and twenty. Recent migration or relocation, and then number two became self-reported economic hardship. So again, because of COVID, a lot of people lost their jobs, which made them more vulnerable to becoming a victim of labor trafficking. And then you also see unstable housing and then criminal record and substance use concern. So then if we look at recruitment. So sixty-nine percent of individuals were recruited for labor trafficking by a potential or current employer. And then the next highest number was for a member of their family, and that was in two thousand and twenty. So if you look at the two thousand and nineteen statistics, the familial was number four. And then after COVID, it became number two in terms of the most likely to recruited. So again, back to COVID, we're back home with our family. And so families were trafficking their own family members. When we're talking about forced labor, there is a general misconception that a lot of the individuals are undocumented. That's not necessarily true. Actually, seventy-one percent of the victims actually entered the United States with a legal visa. As Special Agent Reed was saying, a lot of times, however, the reason that they enter the United States is for one reason. And then once they get here, their trafficker says, actually, you're going to be doing this other job. And the problem is, the victim then can't disclose what is happening to them. Because the trafficker says, well, then I'm going to report that you're doing this other work, that's not what you're here to do. And then you're going to be deported. So they use that visa as leverage over the victim to gain control and coercion. Thirty-seven percent were residential domestic service, twenty-four percent were at restaurants and hospitality, and nineteen percent were agricultural. And then that's six thousand one hundred and fifty, that's on average, the amount that victims paid in recruitment fees to enter the United States alone. So when they come to the United States, they already have a debt that they're trying to pay off. Okay, so for sex trafficking, the top three identified types of sex trafficking were escort services. Illicit massage, health and beauty, and then pornography. The forms of force, fraud, and coercion, the top three were exploiting or inducing substance abuse. So as I indicated, they're either finding a victim who is already has substance abuse concerns. Or what they're doing is they're introducing that individual to substance abuse so that they can then use that as a method of control. Physical abuse and then sexual abuse. Recruitment tactics, the top three were intimate partner or marriage proposition, so I'm going to be your boyfriend, I'm going to take care of you. The second top recruitment tactic was familial. And then the third was a job offer advertisement. In my work, I've seen individuals who are seeking out models or backup dancers. And then when the individual responds to that ad and goes to that location, it then is changed into, no, this is actually what you're going to do for me. When we're talking about recruitment, so in two thousand and twenty-two, recruitment by a family member caregiver went up forty-seven percent. After, in two thousand and twenty, from two thousand and nineteen. Recruitment by an intimate partner went up twenty-one percent. And then when you did sex and labor combined, it went up forty-two percent for the family member and up thirty-nine percent for intimate partner. So again, when people were back home, isolated during COVID, the family members were the ones who were then exploiting them. The recruitment tactics in two thousand and nineteen, intimate partner was the top one and familial was the second. When we're looking at the risk factors in two thousand and nineteen, substance use concern was the top one. Runaway or homeless youth was the second one, and recent migration or relocation was the third. And then in two thousand and twenty, substance use was still the first, runaway was still the second, but unstable housing became the third. Again, going back to people losing their jobs and then losing housing.
Sure, so there's some trafficking indicators we'll talk about. Generally, the one that's the most common is if you encounter somebody that you believe is being trafficked, are they in possession of their travel documents? Is somebody holding the document for them or without their permission? Was the victim coached on what to say to law enforcement, immigration officials? Obviously, you probably won't encounter this, but law enforcement is very aware that oftentimes when interviewing victims. They do appear to be coached on what to say or the lack of information or. Oftentimes, we ask follow-up questions, like how did you get here? If they can't explain it, they probably are being somewhat deceptive. Was the victim recruited for one purpose and forced to engage in some other job? Did you come to the US to do nails and now you're doing illicit massage or walking the streets offering as a sex worker? Was the victim forced to perform sexual acts, that one explains itself? Does the victim have freedom of movement? This is another key indicator for us. Is if you encounter somebody that you believe is being trafficked, are they allowed to leave the business? Are they allowed to leave the hotel? If they do, where can they go, how far can they walk? Do they have a car, do they have a driver's license, do they have money, do they have an ID? If not, then there's probably a good chance that they're being trafficked or held against their will. Has the victim or family been threatened with harm? If the victim attempts to escape, this is, this has happened here in Hagerstown and in Frederick. Where a minor will actually come over to the United States to work for her family. And her family, to pay for the transport to the United States, will put up their property. And once they get to the United States. You know, they'll be paid a minimum amount of wage, so therefore it'll take five, ten years for them to actually pay off the debt owed, you know, in the other country. Has the victim been harmed or deprived of food, water, sleep, medical care, or other life necessities? This is generally pretty apparent based off looking at them, you know. Do they appear to be healthy, are they skinny? Can the victim freely contact friends or family? Is the victim a juvenile engaged in commercial sex? If that's the case, it's human trafficking regardless. And is the victim allowed to socialize or attend religious services? Some sex trafficking red flags. I can barely see this. It is in my eyes of the screen. Some sex trafficking red flags. If they're under eighteen and engaging in commercial sex. Multiple untreated STIs, signs of branding such as tattoos with the controller's name or burn marks. We don't see that a whole lot here stateside, but that is common in other countries. And then hotels, are they paying in cash, is there multiple individuals in and out of the room, multiple hotel room key cards, lubrications, condoms, notes? So with the hotels, what we see a lot of is that they frequent the kind of day-rate hotels. The kind of hotels that you can kind of pay by the hour, pay by the day. Indicators of human trafficking. I feel like we already went through this.
Yeah, for labor trafficking, a lot of times what they do is they'll isolate. So yeah, for labor trafficking, a lot of times what they do is they'll isolate the victim. And so they're not gonna allow them to go to the hospital or go to the doctor. Um, rarely, they'll allow them to go to church. They wanna make sure that that victim is being isolated. So that there's less chance that there's someone that that victim can make an outcry to. Um, so a lot of times, the first ti- the first thing we do when we recover a victim is to offer them food, water, change of clothes. Um, and then we try to get them to see a medical professional just to have them checked out, because a lot of times they haven't seen doctor in years. And we wanna make sure that they're okay. So um, this is the business regulation statute that applies statewide regarding lodging training. Um, so every time there's a new employee within the lodging establishment, there must be an annual training done. And the um, the lodging establishment has to uh, indicate to the state that that training has been done. That same thing, so here are the approved trainings that have been put out by the state of Maryland. Um, there's three different trainings. Uh, Marriott has their own training that's available to their own employees. But any other lodging establishment can have their employees do either of these other two trainings. And they do have to certify annually that all of their employees have been trained. So if labor trafficker, or if human trafficking is suspected, if it involves a child, it's reported to CPS. This is regardless of whether or not the trafficker is a family member or household member. So traditionally, when we think of child abuse, there has to be that custodian caregiver relationship. When it um, involves trafficking, you do not have to have that relationship and you don't even have to know who the trafficker is. Um, so if a victim, if a child victim discloses trafficking or is suspected to be trafficking, it can be reported without even the. Offenders' information accessible, which is kind of different than our typical child abuse and neglect. Um, your regional navigator um, is housed at the Safe Place Child Advocacy Center. Her name's Natalie Reed. She can take um, any referrals for individuals up to the age of twenty-four. So it's a little different than it's not just minors, but it's any minors and then adults from eighteen um, to twenty-three. That she can provide services to um, and assist with um, doing case management. And then if you're unsure or if it involves an adult, obviously, if it's an immediate situation, call nine-one-one. Um, but otherwise, if it's a tip or suspected activity, um, these are some individuals that are local.
Yeah, but you can always reach out to me. My uh, my cell phone's there. I would highly encourage you, if you think somebody's being trafficked, to dial nine-one-one first. Um, there's Hagerstown Police Detective, uh, there's actually two of them that do investigate trafficking, uh, Detective Vogel and Detective Fleagle. And then for the Sheriff's Office is Detective Sergeant Howard Ward, but always call nine-one-one.
All right, and that's our contact information. Again, apologize, we flew through it, um. But if you guys have any additional questions, um, we're happy to answer those questions and feel free to reach out and thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Good information. I've learned a lot.
Yeah, I'm curious as to the ratio between uh, male and female victims. Do you find more female victims?
Yes.
Kind of figured that out.
Yes, we do. I know that there is, um, the human trafficking, the National Human Trafficking Hotline does publish stats every year. Um, I believe, I don't have them in front of me right now, but I believe that it's about eighty percent female.
Yeah, I think that's pretty accurate. So just local knowledge here, Hagerstown, I'd say uh, probably eight out of ten are girls. And you know, the other two would be males.
Well, and I I have one other question among many, but um, the reason that you're here is because we. Were talking to Code about, you know, the the trafficking situations that we were experiencing here. Is there, are there any um, ramifications for the hotels that have trafficking issues over and over again? From a state, you know, perspective or federal or anything like that? Is there any?
Yeah, so I guess it is kind of why we're here. So from a criminal aspect, uh, to prove a criminal investigation. Uh, it's pretty difficult to prove that they they knowingly allowed this to happen. There's so many rooms.
What's the point of the training then? Right, if it's mandated ta- training.
I mean, I think the idea behind the training is so that they can identify. So when I do my trainings, I typically put up the FedEx symbol and I say, you know. If you know the arrow between the E and the X, then you've seen it before, you know what you're looking for. But until someone points it out, you don't see it. And so that's how I really equate human trafficking is that. Once you're trained on what to see, you see it all over the place. I mean, it's constant. But prior to that, it's happening right in front of our eyes, but we don't really know the indicators and it's not as obvious. And so I think, why are we making hotels be trained? I think the purpose is so that they know what to look for and then they can report it if it is occurring. One of the cases that we had in Frederick, um, it actually was reported by a hotel staff person. Saw these two girls come in and they were dressed in what that staff person believed to be inappropriate clothing. And they called it in and said, hey, look, we've got this going on. I'm not really sure what's going on. Can you take a look into it? Um, and they were two juveniles who were being trafficked. So I think the idea behind it is to make people aware of what to look for. So that they can report it so that law enforcement can then investigate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for what you do. It's a tough field to be in. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good. More questions? Thank you. Cultural Trail Crosswalk Location across Baltimore Street, Jim Bender, City Engineer. Hi, Joe.
Good afternoon. I think have appeared a couple of times before the council uh, to talk about uh, Meredith's Park. And how it's going to uh, impact the cultural trail. And at the regular session meeting last week, um, I had an item on up for consideration. That was an easement agreement with the Hagerstown Housing Authority to relocate part of the trail and put it along their frontage. On Baltimore Street. And I know that a concern was raised during the discussion of that item, that uh, the location of the proposed crosswalk. Um, I guess there were some safety concerns over that. So the reason that I'm here today is to explain the rationale for why we think the crosswalk location is the safest one. Um, and then if I, hopefully, if I can convince you of that, then we can move forward with the uh, relocation of the cultural trail. And executing the agreement with the Hagerstown Housing Authority. So in the memo, uh, there are a number of different exhibits. Uh, the first one is just sort of an overall view of, aerial view of West Baltimore Street. And you can see the existing crosswalk that where the cultural trail used to be. Um, crossing Baltimore Street, sort of at a skew or an angle. And then further to the east, up at the entrance to the Potomac Towers facility. That really is the location that has kind of been dictated to us by the Maryland Stadium Authority. Where the trail has to land on their side of the street. And so we're talking about relocating the crosswalk to the east somewhere up in that location. And so um, the next photo um, shows the entrance to Potomac Towers. And it shows the utility pole, I think, that is in question there. And the question really uh, comes down to which side of that utility pole should the crosswalk be on? Should it be on the, the Potomac Towers entrance side of the pole, the east side of that pole, or should it be on the west side toward the mural? So the next couple of photos um, show coming from different directions. And I think that this, this explains why we thought that the crosswalk should be on the mural side of that utility pole. So photo number one um, is standing in Baltimore Street to the west, looking back toward uh, Potomac Street. And the yellow arrow there is pointing to one of my staff who's out there in a fluorescent yellow jacket. In photo number one, he's standing on the west side of that utility pole and he is um. You know, for the most part, unobstructed, you can easily see him. Photo number two is when he moves to the east side of that pole, um, really at the Potomac Towers entrance. And he is much more obstructed from view at that point. Um, photo three is from looking the other direction. This is uh, about halfway up to Potomac Street and you're looking west down Baltimore Street. Um, toward the mural. Photo three shows the person on the west side of the utility pole, which is where we think the crosswalk ought to be. He's partially obstructed, but there is some visibility there. In photo number four, he's on the, he's on the east side of the pole at Potomac Towers entrance, very easily visible. The difference, the difference between these and the reason why we feel it's important to have the crosswalk on the west side of that utility pole. Is the situation that you see in photo number two. Because if there is an eastbound traveling vehicle coming from Salmon Avenue heading up toward Potomac Street. If they get to that location, if someone steps out into the road at that point, that driver's gonna have very little warning. Um, because he, he is obstructed. And so I think that that's more of a concern than what you see in photo three, looking in the other direction. Um, he's on the west side of the pole. That person is gonna have to get halfway across the street before he's gonna be in conflict with a westbound traveling vehicle. So it's gonna give that westbound driver time to, you know, make him aware of the pedestrian, slow down, wait for them. I mean, the other part of this is at all of the mid-block crosswalks on the cultural trail, we do have these flashing beacons. Um, you know, rapid, rapidly flashing beacons, they're called RRFBs. And if you look at the photo, there are a number of signs on that pole encouraging pedestrians to press the button. Be aware that cars may not stop because it's not a traffic signal. It's a, just a warning beacon. And we plan to relocate those beacons up to this new crosswalk location. So I think. In my view, the correct place for that crosswalk to be is on the west side of that utility pole. Because the other factor in this is um, it helps to separate people using the cultural trail. From the traffic that is turning into Potomac Towers. You know, I, I would rather keep pedestrians away from that entrance, just because it's another point of potential conflict.
You know, originally, the crosswalk was intended to sort of wrap in and around the concourse of. The stadium, right? That was, that was the idea we were sold on. But that's not the idea that occurred. Uh, the, the objective now is to push the pedestrian traffic of the cultural trail. Out of the stadium area. Um, so some of the things that you don't see here. And I guess my concern um, is, is if you, you pull out a little from this picture. And it isn't just that side of the street where that telephone pole is. But what we're not seeing is the other angle of where you cross the street. Um, part of the reason that that's being angled is that's where they plan to have their. Delivery process. So you're gonna have vehicles doing delivery there, right? And so I guess I'm just trying to, to envision this scenario that's happening on a regular basis then. That there'll be the large delivery vehicles that have to to pull in, back out, back in to that location, which is. Uh, which is here.
Just want to say, where are you looking?
Um, well, we're, we're basically where Hood Street used to come out, right?
It's, it's close to that. I think it's close to where the.
So if you're looking at, if you're looking at this first picture, that's what'll happen. So you've got large truck traffic that's making slow maneuvers at that location on a regular basis. Both day and evening for pickup and drop-off of items for that facility. You have the building, I believe that's the building that just caught fire, right? Right on the corner? So folks are going to have to, to be standing there outside of the line of sight. Cause there's a large utility pole in that corner, that fortunately, I don't think was caught up in that fire, but isn't movable either. So when you come from, when you come from uh, the other side of Baltimore Street across Potomac. And I don't know if you, how many of you do that on a regular basis, but you come through and then you've got to do one of these. Because those streets are actually offset. Baltimore Street is offset West Baltimore and East Baltimore. So you have to actually almost come around that building and then go down. Then your, then your, your pedestrians, you know, and this isn't two or three people. You know, this is, you know, a, a, a greater magnitude of people on a regular basis in the evening. Uh, with a lot of activity occurring that are going to be like behind this building on the opposite side of the street, waiting to cross. So on that side of the street, you have that issue because they can't go down any further. Because this is where your, your, your pickup and drop-off and unloading and loading area is. And that's gonna be directly across from, we plan to put this crosswalk in on the housing authority side. And if you are your average pedestrian, let's say your average driver, if you look at this picture, you're gonna be looking for people here. Because that's, that's the ADA ramp that you see. I mean, we actually, it's, it's bricked differently. And I don't assume we're gonna change that. So if we're not gonna change that, that's where you're looking for people if you're doing this, you know, around the corner and down the street. And you certainly do have more time, but. You're gonna have these loading and unloading vehicles on this side of the street. And this isn't just an entrance to Potomac Towers. That's a reality. This is a through street for all intensive purposes. So you have folks that wanna get into Potomac Towers, you have folks that want to go to the game, that wanna find parking. That are likely, before it's all said and done and before it gets closed off. Will use this as a cut-through to get back to Lee Street to wrap back around. You're clearly gonna have folks at this busy area now that. Like it or not, they're not going to wanna wait. They're not gonna wanna wait because the, the, the large vehicle is, is unloading and they're, so they're gonna, you know, the first chance they get, they're gonna go around them into the oncoming lane. Or they're not gonna wait for the guy that's waiting to turn in Potomac Towers, because now there's gonna be a line there. Uh, of vehicles that wanna go through, which puts these people behind this pole, I think. That's where they do all like their concessions and trash removal and all that stuff.
They wouldn't fall into the lot?
That's the whole reason that we have to move this is because they put the loading and unloading area there. Which doesn't allow then for the cultural trail to go across there, because that's where it was gonna go across originally. Which would have provided a much better line of sight, because it would have kept it down the street closer to where it is or was. So it just, to me, like, we're putting it at a forty-five degree angle behind two telephone poles, behind one building on one side. Um, and at an area where vehicles are gonna want to pull around that. Uh, at that particular location, because you know, they're not all gonna wait the entire time for that truck to back in, to unload. They're not all gonna wait for that vehicle that wants to turn, you know, the, you know, into, into Potomac Towers. And I guess that's the concern I have is, it would be one thing if it was just the crosswalk going at an angular manner. At that location, but unless somebody tells me you're gonna close off the ability for vehicles to go through here. To cut to Lee Street, or that, you know, there's gonna be some type of, of traffic control mechanism. For the trucks that are backing into or pulling into, right? Cause those trucks, if they don't back in, they're gonna have to pull in. So they're gonna have to back into or pull through that crosswalk on a regular basis as well. Right? Cause they're gonna have to come across it to get into that space the way it's designed.
If we relocate it, yes.
No, cause it goes in this way, right?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following what you're saying.
It goes into the property, um, I thought it went into the property long ways.
No, I think that it's, um, there's not much space there for that, that loading area.
To begin with.
Yeah, so it's.
You'll have trucks stuck out into the sidewalk from time.
That.
Often.
That is a possibility.
That's a reality.
Unless we say no.
Well, y- you're not going to be able to say no, because that's where they need to load and unload the goods. And so that's what's pushing this, that's part of what's pushing this at an angular nature away from that area. Um, on the northbound side of the crosswalk. And I guess I just, like, I look at it and, and, you know, and I have to sit here as a council member and say. Is this a safe thing that I would? is this a safe thing that I would approve, implement? And, I mean, I just can't come up with the answer of yes. Knowing that those related circumstances exist at that particular spot? I mean, the safer plan then is just to send people up to the corner and have them cross at a crosswalk where, I mean, because when I read the memo and it says, you know, the, the crosswalks are mid-block crossings, you know, to begin with, the reality is on Baltimore Street, there were two other issues. One, it was a wide open space, you could see all the way in each direction, you know, there was no impediment on either side of the street to the existing or previous location. And the second is, it was pretty much out of street because Hood Street was there, you know what I mean? There was an expectation that there were traffic movements going on.
And a third thing is there wasn't a four thousand seat facility there.
Yeah, and, and I use the comparison of the one on Washington Street, right? Everybody travels down Washington Street and I, and you think oddly, wow, there's this weird crosswalk in the middle of a block.
Their university plaza.
Yeah.
With a stop.
But it has a stoplight.
Yeah.
And it's not going to see, or doesn't see near the pedestrian traffic that this venue space will see. And so I just, and I get it, there, there is no good solution here, that's the reality. And I don't envy staff at all to attempt to find that. I just, I think without being able to envision how it's really going to be dressed up to where there is, you know, some greater assurance, you know, that, that, you know, that some parent's not gonna lose a kid, you know, lose track of a kid in an event space like that, you know, and, and, and some jerk isn't gonna try and cut through, uh, Potomac Towers at that moment or around the delivery truck at that moment, I think is a pretty crappy, like, situation to want to say, yeah, yeah, I think it'll work. Uh, that's just me.
Yeah, like, it's a couple of things. I think that, um, on the deliveries, there certainly are going to be truck deliveries, there's gonna be trash removal, that sort of thing. I think though that you're gonna see that at times when the stadium is not.
Yeah, I wish I had a better understanding of that, you know what I mean? Of, of like, the scheduling of that occurring.
Right.
I, I wish I had a better understanding of what the Housing Authority really plans to do to limit the ability for cars, once this does open up, to cut through Lee Street. I, I just, for me, like, I wish I knew those things a little better so I could say, okay, that concern is, is resolved, that concern is resolved. I wish I had a little better understanding of what's gonna happen with that building on the corner.
Yeah.
The one that caught fire. Because if it's coming down, it addresses some of that concern on, on the north side then. It's just without that, uh, you know, ability to see th- those things, you know, we, we are installing something in, 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 I guess, you know, it's sort of like a massive confusion of space. And I, and I wish I understood a little better also, what, to what degree we expect folks to walk to the stadium from that direction.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, you know, wh- what that number is. Uh, I guess the only thing that, that came to mind is, uh, when, uh, when Rodney was here sometime, you know, we had that discussion with our hands. You know, we had like seven hundred and fifty people that crossed that street every day at mid-block. And we all sort of agree, yeah, this isn't the best, you know, we need to figure out, you know, some ways to make that better.
Right.
And I, I, so I wish I'd sort of understood that number. And I, I don't know what that number is.
Yeah, I mean, we did do, um, there had been a, a parking study that sort of looked at where people are likely to park, um, that would be coming to an event here. And I think that that was, a lot of that was based on, we thought that if the stadium was gonna be built, the third parking deck was gonna be built. And it looked, in the distribution of where there is available parking, you know, that's public parking, not private parking, was more into the downtown area than it was south. So I think that, you know, there might, there probably would be people that park at City Park, um, and walk up the Cultural Trail to events. They would probably park in some private parking lots down near Lee Street, would be my guess, really anywhere that they can find them.
So when you say there's gonna be a flashing beacon, like, so in my mind, kind of, it's gonna date me a little bit on council, but when we, when we resolved, I felt that we resolved, or felt that we resolved the best we could, uh, the folks that have to cross, and that's such a much smaller number, on, um, Walnut Street, right? And we head to it, we, we installed some things there. I'm just trying to figure out what you mean by, by beacon lighting, like, is it going to require vehicles to stop? If you push the button, is it gonna require vehicles to stop?
No.
Just a flashing sign.
It's a warning, it's a warning.
And they, and, and sometimes they do, the polite ones do, and I've seen people.
But I mean, that's the intent, I mean, I mean, we're talking Walnut where it was just, you know, that was just to assist individuals to get to, to, I believe, uh, to the dining hall from one side to the other.
Right.
A very small number of, I believe you have to stop at that, uh.
If they're in the crosswalk, it's a yield, it's a yield, it's not a stop.
State law is that you have to stop, you're supposed to stop.
If you're in a crosswalk.
For people that are in the crosswalk. Jim, let me say that, um, you know, a lot of this kind of happened before I was here. So my perspective is a more recent perspective. And I'm looking at this first photograph that you provided. And I'm looking at what I remember to be the wonderful end, uh, that, that piece of the Cultural Trail, where the various piece of art, pieces of, you know, physical art were. And you came down and went across the street. And I understand, and I remember all the stories in the paper and all the discussion, that, you know, when, when the decision was made to build the stadium by the state, and again, I wasn't here, but I, you know, it looks, it seemed, you know, what obviously happened is the city said, okay, we'll let you have this piece of the Cultural Trail for Wright Field. You know, my grandmother had a saying, no good deed goes unpunished. And it just seems, and this is, I mean, Councilman Alshire says he doesn't envy you in this situation. I'm gonna say, this has nothing to do with you in the sense that there's no blame here. But when I read the paragraph that says, um, what you alluded to, the landing point for the Cultural Trail at, on the Mary Jeth's Park side of the street has been set by the Maryland Stadium Authority. And then it goes on to say that, you know, given that, this is what we have to do, there's very little flexibility. And I'm saying, the, the council, the city gave and gave and gave to make things happen. And now, and I'm gonna be a little flippant with this remark, so pardon me for that. But this decision seems to be, you can either go to the hospital or you can go to the morgue, but, you know, this is what we're gonna give you to go across the street. And I don't, I feel like, it sounds like the city has been boxed in to a decision that need, there's no good answer. That's, that's what I'm hearing, that's what I'm seeing on these diagrams. I think that, I mean, I know that it's the city that wants the Cultural Trail. I think the Cultural Trail is a huge asset for this city. I've heard about it from people, um, all over the east coast. People have come here just to enjoy that amenity. And so I, I just feel like we have to figure out how to make sure that it is uber-safe, very safe. And there's gonna be, as I said, there's, isn't it a four thousand seat facility? So let's say they do their job right, let's say they fill all those seats and they're on, whether it's game day or concert or festival or anything else that's happening there, there are gonna be people swarming, because the parking deck is three hundred, four hundred spaces. Even if you have two people in every car, that's eight hundred people. So the other thirty-two hundred people have to come from somewhere. And they're gonna, a lot of them are gonna cross from below the stadium site through here. I would say that like the Washington Street, West Washington Street crosswalk, it should be a device that stops traffic. And if that means a stoplight, you push the button, you wait till the light, green light turns red and traffic stops in both directions, and then you cross. It works outside of the university system of Maryland at Hakers Town. I think it would work here. And further, I'll go on to say, I think that we should not, the city should not allow any kind of impediment to the sidewalks or the street. No standing on the street, no trucks stopping in the street to unload. And if a truck doesn't fit in whatever space that's on site, the answer is, get a smaller truck or do something else. Because I think that what, what I feel like, and I know I'm the new guy here, but what I feel like is, and I felt this way on several different issues, this just happens to be one more, like, sorry, Mayor and Council, you just have to deal with this, you just have to take it. And I'm saying, I don't think so. And I would like to see a higher level of this, and if the Stadium Authority has to come back, look, they're spending a hundred million dollars to play baseball. If they need to come back and put in a light, then so be it. That's my thing.
I think that.
What do you say to that, Jim?
Well, I think. I think that, I, I hear what you're saying, and I don't disagree at all that if you had a signal, a true traffic signal with a stop traffic there, that would be the safest way to handle this. And that may be something that we can implement in the future. But I think the reality is, it would probably take seven or eight months to get a signal like that designed and constructed. So for the immediate opening of the stadium, I don't think that that's really an option. We do have time to get the Cultural Trail relocated and get those beacons moved before the start of the season.
What about something like the flashing stop signs? Could we do something like that? I mean, this, this is like a suggestion, somebody's crossing, it's flashing, but could we do something like stop signs or flashing stop signs?
Like a park circle?
Yes.
We could park circle or it's, uh, Valley Mall.
Right.
So everybody.
I mean, that at least would be more pedestrian friendly. If it's flashing and it's a stop sign.
Then you have to stop, right?
Then they went through a stop sign.
But if it's not flashing, you don't have to stop?
Nah, I think if it's a stop sign, you have to stop. If it's flashing, it's just to bring your.
Right, right. But even still, if there's no pedestrians there, you stop and then you continue.
What are the, what are the enj- street engineering?
I don't know.
There, yeah, once you go.
Once you come to that one thing.
I stop at that thing.
I stop at it too, it says stop.
Sorry, Jim, I know this is.
Yeah, that's something, that's something I would have to look into. There's a, there are federal regulations that, um, sort of dictate when you can and can't put up certain types of traffic control. And usually for traffic signals or even stop signs, you have to go through an evaluation process and you have to, you have to show that it's warranted and it has to meet certain conditions for, in order to be warranted. I would have to research, I would have to research that, to be honest, to see if a flashing stop sign could be warranted there or could be installed.
And I know this isn't dual highway, but we unfortunately have many pedestrian accidents and many deaths.
Yeah.
Sue. Timeline wise, because I hear you saying, you know, take that come, X amount of time to do, to do this, X amount of time to do that, right?
Right.
And I get that, fully understand it. Does this have to be installed by the time the stadium opens? In other words, the alternative for pedestrians, until such time as we made an appropriate decision, we felt was the safe decision, pedestrians would have to go up to the signalized intersection, either at Potomac across the street, or they could go across the street at the intersection of Summit and Baltimore, for folks that are coming from that direction.
No, I, I, no, putting the, doing the relocation of the Cultural Trail and putting in this new crosswalk is not a requirement. There are, there are other paths for people to, to walk to get there. It was just, we were, we were aiming to try to have this work done by the opening of the stadium. Just so that it was, you know, the Cultural Trail was continuous and you were, somebody at City Park could walk the whole way up to Washington Street
And I guess, for me, what I hear in that is, is the inclination that you, you do the item that, um, is, is not the safest in order to meet that timeframe, or you forego the timeframe and do the item that's the safest.
That's, yeah, that is, no, it's definitely a.
And I guess I have difficulty saying that I would choose expediency and aesthetics over safety. That, that, that just me.
I agree. I think that's a good decision.
Yes.
And in Annapolis, by the way, there's a street where was notorious for jaywalking, meaning crossing the street, not at a crosswalk or at the, at the signalized intersection. And the city put up a fence, you can't, I mean, I guess, could climb over, but people have to walk around. They literally put a fence up the whole block.
So when the stadium is complete and ready and open, on the north side of Baltimore Street, because right now it's all fenced off and everybody's working, will that be open and accessible its entire length on the north side of the street?
Yes.
So there won't be an impediment there for, for opening that.
No, it's gonna be.
There'll be a fence.
But you, you won't, you won't, I, I get that. What I'm saying is, you'll be able to utilize that sidewalk. If I were to, if I were to walk up from the south end, City Park, I would, I, I could walk across the street at Baltimore and Summit. And walk all the way down that sidewalk.
Yes.
And I get it, like, you know, for the first couple of months, you may not be able to choose the Cultural Trail as your path of direction. You know, because, because this won't be done.
Right.
So you have to choose Potomac and Baltimore, you have to choose Summit and Baltimore.
Right.
Those are completely, you know, fine choices. You know, and, and, you know, while you're determining if this is, you know, if this is the only solution at the end of the day, it's the only solution, I think at least at that point, even if you're two months in, you would have an understanding of where people are crossing, right? And, and how people are using those other two parts. And so where there's an alley now, that'll just be for pedestrian activity.
No, the alley is gonna be vehicular and the Cultural Trail is.
The alley on Baltimore Street?
I'm lost now.
The alley is vehicular traffic.
By Crenshaw's.
It'll be between the alley and the fence of the beer garden, I understand the design. So basically, you walk along the walkway, the alley will be right on your right, right? There'll be no impediment between the walkway and the alley.
There's a, there's a difference. There's a stretch in between there.
Right, but there's, there's no, there's no, there's no physical barrier. And on the, immediately on your left will be the, not the wall, the stadium, it's like a, it's like a double-paneled fence that, that basically, you know, if you're walking on the trail, you won't be able to see into the stadium.
That's correct.
Yeah. I didn't realize, and, and again, that's just me not knowing sort of how things are all gonna function there, where we're putting this crosswalk. I, I didn't realize that the alley would still be, you know, accessible and drivable. So which direction will it be drivable? If I'm coming into the parking deck, right, and it's full? And I've gotta go back up to Potomac, will that alley be accessible to go out or only accessible to come in?
Right now, it's only one way at the far end, right, the first, the building length, uh, to Antietam Street. From the back of that, well, what was that building? From the back of that front first lot on Antietam Street, all the way down to Baltimore, even though it's one lane, it's two-way, you can go either.
So if, if I can't get in the deck, I'm gonna take a right into that alley. I'm gonna cut all the way down that alley to get to Baltimore, because I know I can jump right across the street to the Housing Authority's entrance, and I can go all the way through to Lee Street. I'm late for a game, I'm trying to catch up with my buddies, and I'm gonna cut through this alley to get through to Lee.
Oh, you're talking about their parking.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna think they'd have to do that. I'm surprised they don't do it all around.
Jim, do you know what's happening with the Aggie herd?
I've talked with Sean Griffith a couple of times, I was obviously talking about the, uh, easement agreement. And I think that they reckon. And I think that they're recognizing question.
Yes, they're gonna see how it goes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the Hagerstown Housing Authority, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but I'll just say, they own three lots. They own two big parking lots, and then on the other side of Lee Street, they own three lots. And if I were them, I'd be putting up twenty dollar event dollar parking, sorry. And encourage everybody to come through my place to get to their parking. I don't know what they're gonna do, but it's not, that's not out of the, out of the question here.
I guess one, one concern I have, if we, if we don't do this work right now, I think if you're coming, if you're walking up the cultural trail from City Park, and you get up to Baltimore Street, the cultural trail is gonna be complete on the stadium side.
That's right.
And I think that, the, it's, in my mind, it's unlikely that somebody is gonna bother walking up to Potomac Street or walking.
I completely agree.
Yeah.
But I'm not gonna be the guy that says yes to creating and designating an unsafe condition, to say, hey, here's where I think you should take that decision, uh, in your hands, uh, as we've directed and do it. Knowing that the alley's gonna be open, the housing authority entrance through Lee's gonna be open, that building, I don't know what condition that's gonna be, I don't know what condition it is, and now what they're gonna be doing with it. Um, whether it's gonna stay, go.
What would you like for Jim to do?
Can we check on the flashing stoplight at least?
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that I, I would say it needs a stoplight, but I agree that there has to be some mechanism.
Not a stoplight, but it's.
See if those stop signs are, are breached, Jim.
You press it and it starts flashing and the car stops, but it's not red, it's yellow.
Right, it's, yeah, it's not a, it's not a stop.
And then put a thing like, like walnut towers, where it says, stick all stop. I mean, I think aesthetics is not gonna look great, but it's gonna, I mean, I'd rather have something that doesn't look great aesthetically and make sure nobody gets.
And that's what's there already.
Yeah.
That's already on Baltimore Street.
Just the walk-in thing.
It's just, the engineer's proposing to move it up the street. It's already there. So, that's, that's not new.
I bet they'll push back on putting a thing in the middle of the road because they'll say the truck's like.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's, that's why I'm saying.
Quarter, quarter red light.
And if, if it's two-way.
And I'm gonna tell you, that's the only access to all of those rear parking lots, including, uh, Saint John Church. It's the only access. You can't get to it, and you can't, there's no access off of South Potomac Street, any of those rear parking lots.
And I don't, I don't know that I mind that all, all that much. What I mind is making a decision that protects, protects what we all envisioned to be pedestrian, a lot of pedestrian.
You can't pull off South Potomac and get down by where the laundromat is and get to the alley to get to.
No, you can't get through there.
Any more?
You used to be able to.
At the laundromat?
Yeah, you can, right?
Yeah, I think so.
They still live right there.
Yeah, okay.
Order of Saint John's property, part law. Yeah, you can go through there.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Should we be asking the engineer to, to investigate making that entire alley one-way, southbound from Antietam to Baltimore, and not go, not be able to turn north?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, but the church.
We have, I just think it's gonna be like a, see what happens for some of this.
Unless you come in off Baltimore Street, you gotta make the whole thing one-way, not just cut it there and there.
That's what I meant, make the whole thing one-way.
You'd have to, yeah.
Unless we widen it.
Coming in off Bald, off of Antietam.
Unless it gets widened somehow, I mean, that.
There's no way to widen it.
Structure in the way.
Everything's so tight there now as it is.
Okay, I thought, I thought mostly parking lot in back there. Okay.
Let's start with the flashings.
Yeah, I need to do some research on what the possibilities are. I'd say at this point, um, I don't think there's any way that we can do anything before the, before opening day. So, I'm gonna have to do some research on what the other alternatives are.
Well, the first several months.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Thanks, Amber.
My gosh. Hello, discussion of public hearing A dash two zero two four dash zero one, annexation of fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Building One. Kathleen Marr, Director of Planning and Code Administration, enjoying a little planning.
Um, I'll just be kinda briefing the annexation. So, the property, just to recap, it's at fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive for Building One. We had the public hearing last week on March twenty-sixth. And, um, a little bit about the property, it's seventy-four acres, the proposed city zoning is IMU, and it's in the MRGA, UG and, uh, State's PFA. Um, we also had comments from Maryland, from the state, um, just saying to, just saying that the, um, zoning is not substant- substantially different from the county, so we don't need express approval, which is nice. I didn't receive any comments from the public at the hearing or within the period from last week. Um, so, this has been put on your agenda right after this little discussion, if you have questions. But, just wanted to brief you, um, that the property owner has requested that we expedite the annexation process for Building Two, so instead of waiting till December thirty-first of this year, we will be starting that shortly. We're working on, um, prepping that for your April twenty-third meeting for the intro of the resolution and the approval of the plan. Um, the zoning would be the same, it'll also be IMU. And, um, the only thing that's a little different is, we will be recommending to offer to take ownership of West Oak Ridge Drive, since the city would be on both sides and be mainly city property, uh, si- in the city. But, yeah.
We're taking ownership from the county?
Yes, from the county.
Do we require them to provide any assessment of, uh, any infrastructure needs before we assume responsibility?
I'm not sure of that. I might have to check.
Kathy?
Or if Kathy's running up right now.
Yep.
Yep.
Good evening. We have not offered to do this before. We had a meeting with county staff several weeks ago now, about what to do when we annex, and there are roads involved, state or county or city roads. And so, we, we were offering to them suggested policy of perhaps, if we are only annexing on one side, there's no dialogue from the city about taking in the county road. But if, by the time we're done annexing, we pretty much are on both sides of the full extent of the road, that that would be a fair time to offer to take it in. And they have done some improvements in that road already because of this project, fifty-five Oak Ridge. And including it, the improvements you see at Potomac and Oak Ridge.
And the other intersection too.
The only thing is, if we're heading down that avenue, it's funny, 'cause I'm having the same conversation in Frederick County right now, a number of the towns, um, is that you just have some check sheet that says, you know, storm drains are good, you know what I mean? Road surface is good, et cetera, so you don't adopt a, an immediate, like, half a million dollar expense that makes Michelle.
For an overlap.
Yeah, well, we could change the annexation plan language to say, seems appropriate to open a dialogue with the county about the appropriateness of West Oak Ridge Drive coming into the city system, since we'll be on both sides of almost the entire stretch here. It's just a little bit down on the south side of Oak Ridge by Potomac that would not be, um, city property. And then the engineer people could get together and have that kind of dialogue.
Yeah. Good, good?
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Special, special voting session. Need a motion for special session or ninety voting session?
Madam Mayor, I move to move into special session.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Approval of Annexation Resolution A dash two zero two four dash zero one, fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Building One.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council approve an annex, excuse me, Annexation Resolution for Annexation Case Number A dash two zero two four dash zero one, fifty-five West Oak Ridge Drive, Building One. The portion of the property to be annexed is approximately seventy-four acres in size, as is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands with I dash MU zoning. The resolution package includes the annexation plat, zoning exhibit, and pre-annexation agreement. Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Approval to accept award of Coverdale Grant.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval to accept the Coverdale Grant, which is one hundred percent grant funded and totals forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. The goal of this grant is to purchase a Pharoah Focus Premium Scanner for the Western Maryland Regional Crime Lab. This is a no-match grant.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Oppose. Motion carries. City Administrator?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. Um, I learned this week that, um, B Marie Byers passed away. The running thing with all of us was what did the B stand for? She would never, never tell you, and then we find out that it stood for Betty, and I don't know why. She would have never let us know that, but, um, I went to church with, started Church of Saint John's with Marie back in nineteen eighty-six. Uh, got to know her, she's the one that got me interested in getting involved in, uh, in the Board of Ed, uh, with PTA. Uh, she was also the one that got, uh, my wife and I involved in the Discovery Station. She created the Discovery Station, was the first executive director of the Discovery Station. And, uh, she was just an all-around pretty good egg and, and, uh, never, never afraid to, to, uh, express her opinion, uh, to me, which, uh, she did a lot. And, um, she, uh, she, she will be missed, and, uh, her husband Jack, also another good guy, um, passed away a few years ago, but, uh, just wanna give my condolences to the Byers family. And, uh, and B Marie will be missed. Also, learned that Aaron Brooks was named, uh, the Hodge Award winner as the best collegiate athlete in the cu- uh, wrestler in the country, so, uh, man, we have got to get him in here and, uh, and, uh, do the, uh, give him the key, I think, hopefully y'all will, will agree with me on that. And, uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Shalimar, start with you.
Just a couple of thank yous. Uh, uh, thank you to HPD for all they do. And a special happy birthday to Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Asher?
Just wanna congratulate the new county attorney on his appointment. Uh, I don't know if meant, uh, directly, but, uh, from everybody that I've heard from, um, I think he's gonna do great.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burnett?
I'm gonna wanna use another birthday.
Oh, you're crazy in here.
Councilmember Preney's birthday was yesterday, so happy birthday. Happy birthday to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Councilmember Preney?
Happy birthday, Madam Mayor. Shout out to Hagerstown Parks and Rec, where's the camera? Uh, for everyone at home, uh, great little pamphlet, everything that's going on. Uh, if you don't have a copy that you got in the paper, you can pick them up here at City Hall, over at the Parks and Rec's office, and plenty of other places, or you can find it online. Lots of great things happening with Hagerstown Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Councilwoman Megan?
Happy birthday to both of you. Um, just two things, this Saturday, April sixth, the Hagerstown Youth Council is doing their event that they have worked extremely hard for, um, and it is from ten AM to two. The, it's a free event for the youth and particularly teenagers. There's presentations and a three K, which isn't that bad, Madam Mayor. You wanna run it with me? It's only three K. It's not that bad. It's better than five K.
Yeah, it is. The three K.
Yeah.
Four to my refrigerator.
Three K, three K. Right, so that starts at ten, and on, um, April nineteenth, the, uh, NV and the Flying Box Cars have partnered for, uh, what we are calling the tenth inning, not the fifth quarter, it is the tenth inning. So, the Flying Box Cars will be there from six to seven-thirty signing autographs. Um, the mascot will be there, Ryan Smetzer, it'll be, um, lots of fun. So, we are con- we are controlling it to one space, it is at South Hagerstown High School, to make it a little easier. So, we would love all of your presence, um, and any of you that can also play basketball. That's it?
That's it. I'm gonna say happy National Poetry Month, and anyone that is interested in doing Thirty Out of Thirty, um, I'm on day two, so thirty poems in thirty days. Not talking anybody any specific, but if there's any poets in the house, they'd like to do Thirty Out of Thirty, love the challenge on that. It's also National Reconciliation Day, um, and so I would just challenge you, back in the day, nineteen eighty-nine, Anne Landers, remember them Dear Anne letters?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so Dear Anne, um, was encouraged on April second to reach out to people that you haven't talked to in a while, reconcile, repair relationships. So, halfway in National Reconciliation Day. And I would leave for Hagerstown, Indiana on the fifth, and I will be back on the eleventh. Um, I'm excited. There's a, it's a total eclipse location, there's a nighttime parade, um, the night before the total eclipse, and, uh, me and myself and Kenya and her family are gonna go out, and some grandkids, and, yeah, they're gonna have a good time. And I'm gonna speak at their high school, in junior high school, and they are going to, uh, pay me out of their opioid settlement to speak on recovery and restoration, so, really, really cool. And, um, everyone have a good week and a good weekend, and that word journey.
Thanks.